Okay. Okay, I guess we're, we're recording now. Friends, welcome to this Bible study in my basement that I've been holding now for a couple of weeks. And today I have the special privilege of being joined by my friend and colleague Rabbi Alex Lazarus Klein. Alex is the Rabbi at Congregation Shere Shalom, which is also here in Williamsville. So it's good to see you, Alex.
Good to see you. Really glad to be part of this discussion.
Yeah, it's, it's been a strange experience to, you know, to be so separated during these last weeks. This is, it's nice to see a face in a conversation.
It's so true. It's almost like we're in the same, it's almost like we're in the same room together, right? I'm in my car, by the way, because that's the only quiet space I can.
Yeah. I've heard of this feature that, that Zoom has, you can put a background behind you.
So yeah, what you see, what you see is our, my hoopla, which is the, the wedding canopy. And that was just a picture I had on, on available on file. And so it's my virtual background.
That's, that's nice. It's very lovely. It's just good. You, you look, you look very, very celebrative there. So you and I talked about the possibility of having a sort of scriptural conversation, a Bible study of some kind together. And it's deciding why, you know, what we want to use is always a challenge, but the daily lectionaries, the daily lectionary readings in the common lectionary actually focuses in the Hebrew scriptures on Exodus today.
Yeah, I wonder if that was a coincidence, or if it is connected to this time of year, obviously.
I suspect it's connected to the time of year. You are currently, are you on the last day of Passover?
Well, it's a little bit confusing because we're a liberal reform reconstructionist congregation. We hold by the Israeli date counting, which is seven days, nine, eight days. So I am done matzah eating.
Oh, okay.
Which, but there are many Jews in our community that this day is still the last day of Passover.
Okay. So what's the difference between Jew or the Israeli calendar and your own in, in, in the diaspora?
Well, basically the rabbis were concerned of not knowing the calendar correctly. And so they added, what they would do is just add a fence around it to make sure that you wouldn't eat bread at a time that you had the fast of not eating bread. And so they added an extra day in the diaspora. And most liberal Jews would say, well, we know the calendar now. There's no chance of making a mistake. And so in Israel, they have a seven day holiday and that's generally how Jews keep it. It really depends. Sometimes it can be divided even in a family. You know, whether, how they, how they are celebrating. People are very tied to their traditions, what they're used to. And they want to make sure to do it right.
That reminds me of an old joke. A man watches his wife preparing a roast for dinner and she cuts the end off the roast and puts it in the pan. And he says, well, why, why do you do it that way? Why, why do you cut the end off of there? And she said, well, that's how my mother always did it. And so they were with their, with the in-laws. And he asked his mother-in-law, you know, why, why do you cut the end off that roast? She said, well, that's, that's how my mother always did it. And, and it was a family gathering and, and the grandmother was there. And they asked her, well, why, why do you need to cut the end off the roast before you put it in the pan? She said, oh, my, my pan was too small.
I love that joke. I've actually heard it now in a Jewish setting, a Presbyterian setting, and then African-American Baptist setting. For the, when it was told to me by an African-American pastor, it was chicken in a pot. And the, he kept, the person kept going back to the great-grandfather or whatever. And in the Jewish setting, it's actually not food at all. It actually has to do with walking down the aisle towards the Be'ama, the raised platform, that people would always duck and they have to try to figure out why they were ducked. And, and the way the story is told, that I've heard it in a Jewish setting, it's that the chandelier in the, the old sanctuary was too low, so they had to duck. But it's, I love that the joke could be changed for whatever setting. It just works. It doesn't matter if it's food or if it's another way, you can retell it however you want, whatever tradition. I'd love to hear a Muslim retelling or a Hindu or something.
Right. Then how we carry these sort of practical measures that are, are, are taken because of expediency. And then they become tradition long past when their, their usefulness has, has ended.
Yeah, we, we talk about this, the institutionalization of a culture. And when it starts, it's very flexible, you know, in a way, kind of like the period we're in, where we're just learning the new norms. And then over time, they become cemented like law, even if they're not necessarily protective. And that's just the way human beings operate. And I, I think, you know, from a Protestant Presbyterian standpoint, I understand that every, you know, bunch of years, you have to kind of have a revival or you have to kind of reset because there's a danger to, to having things set too much in stone where they don't have.
We, we have, one of our principles is this, the phrase reformed and always reforming. Now that's, that's to be understood as reforming, not just for its own sake, but through the guidance of the Holy Spirit. But that's still that, that being open to that change is, is really important. And in the context will, to a certain degree, determine that.
Yeah, I, I love that. Actually, the movement that I became a rabbi through, the reconstructionist Jewish voice, reconstructionism, actually the name itself implies every generation has to reconstruct the way Judaism is, using the tools of the past, but also the tools of the present. And so it's kind of built in. And, you know, it's interesting, even though it's been very dynamic, it still becomes institutionalized. That is, that is always a tension, even if you put it in the name or in the foundational the values of your, of whatever it is, it still will become institutionalized. It's just the way of human beings.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think people, you know, we, we want to have something that is, I guess standardized and predictable.
Yeah, definitely. And then, you know, once people get the rules, they want to stick with the rules, which I guess is a good segue to our texts, particularly from Exodus.
Absolutely.
To what we're, what we're looking at.
Great. Yeah. Well, why don't we get to that then? Did, would you, should we have the, the words on the screen? Would that be helpful, do you think, for folks, at least for this portion?
I think we'll encourage people. Why don't, why don't we encourage people to go to the website? What's the website that they can get access to pretty easily?
Okay, so these are, this is the daily lectionary readings. If you go to the PCUSA.org website and you'll have to do a search for daily lectionary readings. And when you do that, it will take you to those readings. And we're looking at, today is April 16th.
All right, why don't we take a look for a little bit? Because, you know, I think with the, the screen, we, we'd rather talk to each other. But let's show people a little bit of the text. That's probably a good idea.
Okay, there you go. Okay. So there you see the first reading. It says Exodus 13, three to 10. And Alex is going to share that with us and give us a little context for that. And then I'm going to look at the gospel reading, Matthew 28, 16 through 20. So Alex, why don't you go for it?
Sure. Actually, I'm going to use a different translation. In the Jewish community, we use something from the Jewish Publication Society. That's the, the normal written translation that's often used. And I'm actually, in front of me, in my library in my car, I have the Plout Pentatech, which is the, what you use for our weekly cycle. So a Jewish, what we call a humash, or the five books of Moses, would be in most synagogues underneath the pews or seats. And what it would have in it is whatever the weekly reading is. And in addition, the secondary reading or additional reading, which is for you guys usually the, the Old Testament or Jewish Bible, Hebrew Bible. So for us, that would be a later section from the book of prophets. But I'm going to read you the section. This is actually wonderful in our Bible study group that anyone among you is also welcome. We have a Zoom Bible study on Saturdays at nine. This is what we, we read from. And it has wonderful commentary below the line also. So I'll read Exodus 13, one through 10. This is an important section about Passover. Passover was really the holiday. It was the New Year. We often think of the New Year, the Jewish New Year, as being in September, October, the month of Shre. But in biblical times, Nissan, which is not a car dealership, but one of the old Babylonian Hebrew months, Nissan was the beginning of the year. And basically Passover served like the July 4th. It was a patriotic holiday of a national birth. And it's really important to understand it in that constant, in that context. And we'll have here, I'm going to read, is really about what they would, in biblical times, with sacrifices and the way they would celebrate this, this holiday, the, the feast of unleavened bread, as it's called in the Torah. The Eternal One spoke further to Moses, saying, consecrate me to every first male, first born, human and beast. The first male issue of every wound among the Israelites is mine. And Moses said to the people, remember this day on which you went free from Egypt, the house of bondage, how the eternal freed you from it with a mighty hand, no leavened bread shall be eaten. You go free on this day in the month of Aviv. So when the eternal has brought you into the land of the Canaanites and the Hittites and the Amorites and the Hivites and the Jebusites, which was sore unto your ancestors, to be given to you a land flowing with milk and honey, you shall observe in this month the following practice. Seven days shall you eat unleavened bread, and on the seventh day, there shall be a festival of the eternal. Throughout the seven days, unleavened bread shall be eaten, no leavened bread shall be found within, with you, and no leaven shall be found in all your territory. And you shall explain to your child on this day, it is because of what the eternal did for me when I was free, went free from Egypt. And this shall serve to you as a sign on your hand, as a reminder on your forehead, in order that the teaching of the eternal may be in your mouth, that with a mighty hand, the eternal freed you from Egypt. You shall keep this institution at its set time from year to year. And that's the entirety of the Exodus that we have.
Right, okay. So this is sort of a establishing sort of the, the ongoing practice?
Yes, yeah. So this is, you know, sort of again, like July 4th, July 4th happens before America is born into existence. This is that moment before they're about to be marking this moment, according to the Torah or according to this text, with, they're going to celebrate in the future. And actually, this connects directly to the Passover holiday. We have Passover Seder. I know North Presbyterian has often participated when we used to have an interfaith Seder. And I know Reverend Hennessy, that you often have gone and you're familiar with, with the Seder. And one part of the Seder is the four children. The rabbis note that there are different answers given about why we have Passover and about the Exodus in the text of the Torah. And how you're supposed to teach your children. Teaching children is fundamental in the biblical narrative. That is how culture is passed out. And this particular instance of the child is the first child that's mentioned, which is the Chacham, the wise child. And the world understood, as the rabbis understood this text to me, it is that I personally was freed. This happening along Exodus, that child was the one freed from, from slavery.
Right, right. So it's, 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 it's really sort of internalizing that event and not just understanding it as sort of in ancient history.
Exactly. Actually, why don't we switch? We don't need the text up for this moment. Why don't we switch it off when we go to the Matthew?
Sure, sure.
Just so I can see your wonderful punim. So, yeah, basically, the, the one thing that the entire Seder is based around is this idea that every generation is supposed to experience the leaving of Egypt as if they personally were part of this, that they were slaves and that they were freed. And actually, this year, it was rather easy to understand what our ancestors were going through, the struggles, the pain. Because in the middle of this pandemic, it feels very much like we're actually in the story. And so I think, even though social distancing prevented our gatherings, just like Easter gatherings, and families had to go to formats like Zoom to have Seder's, it actually made it much more visceral. And then we actually felt like we are in Egypt. We understand what a plague means. And we understand what freedom means so much more when we don't feel like we have full freedom because of such circumstances.
Right, yeah, absolutely. I, I, that's, yeah, I, I think that, to a, to a certain degree, a similar experience has been happening for, for us around Lent. You know, that time of Lent is to be, you know, a time of, of sort of meditation and solitude. And suddenly we were, we found ourselves in a sort of forced solitude or forced isolation that had the potential to, I think, deepen that experience of, of, of sort of examining our, our lives more closely. And, and, and that whole, that whole period of Lent is meant to sort of join Jesus in his fasting in the desert. He went through a 40-day fast before he began his ministry. And so Lent is meant to, to sort of help us to enter that experience with Jesus. So again, it's, it's this internalizing of the experience. So it's not something we just remember that someone else did, but it's something we are part of as well.
Right, it's so powerful. In a culture, you have to experience those early, early days, that feeling of rebirth, kind of like what we were talking about earlier, I think it was before our Zoom call, just how things get institutionalized and fighting through that. We have to feel that direct experience where the magic happens. I think you and I, as religious leaders, we feel the magic of our face so directly, but I think it's harder for others to just, they can feel disconnected to it until you internalize that. And the Passover Seder, the rabbis were quite brilliant in understanding education, how it works. Here it's about teaching children. They understood that it's within families.
Yeah, you kind of, you're cutting out there.
And so it's not, doesn't come, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's a fault of the Zoom, right? It's within family structures that culture gets passed down. And that it's the, it's the, it's that teaching moment. It actually, I became a rabbi largely because of our at-home Passover Seder's. I went to a Jewish day school. My family was fairly unfamiliar. They knew how to read Hebrew, but they didn't have strong cultural Jewish, you know, Jewish backgrounds. And so my sisters and I would learn at school, Passover, you know, we would spend quite a bit of time on it. And then we would teach our parents. And it was that experience of child teaching parent that made, gave me the confidence to kind of end up becoming a rabbi. And I am not alone. I think that it's a very, very powerful experience to be able to teach and share and come into your own in your small family networks.
We find more and more that children bring their parents to church more, more often than the, the other way around. It's what the, it's when, when the kids become engaged, that the parents feel like, you know, there's a place for them in, in the life of the church. So, yeah, that, that, I think that, that, that exchange happens in our context as well.
Well, I think, you know, it's just the way human beings work, you know, I think it's really, really important. And that's how you maintain culture. You have to give that next generation an opportunity to teach and to learn on their own and to recreate. And if you don't, then the culture will eventually die with the elders and you don't want that to happen.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So how would this section be looked at from a Christian standpoint? I'd love to, to hear where.
The Exodus? The Exodus passage?
Particularly, particularly these passages. Are these read outside of the daily lexicon?
Not a lot, I think. And, you know, we, we certainly are familiar with the story of Exodus. Passover for Christians has a, a different definition, I guess, because of the association with the Last Supper, with Jesus' Last Supper. And, and something that I think we've often failed to communicate well is, you know, when Jesus goes to Jerusalem, that's, that's what he's there to celebrate. And that, that his Last Supper and that whole sequence of events leading to his crucifixion all happened within the context of Passover. And which would have been in that, in that time, that first century period would have been a pretty volatile moment in Jewish life because of what Passover implies in the context of Roman occupation.
I had a chance with a group of clergy to go into the room where the Last Supper was supposed to take place in the upper room. It's interesting. It's a, it's a mosque now. And so as you walk in, you'll have Muslims come and they'll be praying towards the Machba, you know, towards Mecca. In between particularly Christian pilgrimage, pilgrims coming in to really connect to Jesus. There's no furniture in the room. It's a pretty bare room. I know it was a, the house of a wealthy person. But it feels at this time, pretty meager dwelling. And it's just interesting because it's within a Jewish, you know, run city. It's a Muslim mosque there and it's the, the central Christian place. It's just very, very interesting, dynamic.
Yeah, and you know, I think the theme of liberation, the theme of, of this, this sort of passage from death to life to new life, it's common in so many of our faiths. And, you know, for Christians, that is sort of embodied in the experience of Jesus. But within Judaism, I, it seems to me that that's what the Exodus story is about. And I don't know what the parallel might be in Islam, but I suspect there is one.
Yeah, I think it's about that direct connection, as particularly humans, you know, feel the suffering of this world. Something Jesus understood so well. And to think that there would be a God that's going to come and end that suffering and whatever mechanism. That's, that's what this is. It's symbolic of us not being alone. I think that's why this story calls out to us, particularly in this period. So many people are just feeling so beleaguered in our isolated spaces and, you know, cry out to God and, and hope for an answer, just like our ancestors did.
Yeah, yeah.
And we continue to always do.
And, and I'm reminded too, that for a lot of us, it's certainly in, for me and for our congregation, you know, we, we are experiencing this really from a position of privilege. But there are so many others in, in our community, right here and across the country and around the world, for whom this kind of isolation either isn't possible, they have to work, they have to be out and because of the kinds of jobs they have or just to survive. Or it is a real deep hardship and, you know, a, a real experience of, of a loss of, of income and, and, and a lot of uncertainty.
Yeah, well, I think, don't you think that both the Exodus story and the Jesus narrative are really about those populations that are most to the side?
Exactly.
You know, here, Jesus' time, the Roman Empire, if you weren't a citizen and if you weren't among the elite, you were rare, you know, you were considered expendable. And certainly with Pharaoh in Egypt, you know, that's the needs of the people just wanting to celebrate and worship their own God were denied. And they didn't have the power. There was no power to go and approach Pharaoh. Uh, and so it's these populations, uh, that are really emphasized. And I think the danger that we have, which what you're speaking is particularly from the suburbs, is that we feel beleaguered maybe in our own lives. Really see how hard it is for others. It's even harder. I think that that's, you know, we feel like we, you know, if we're internalizing it, we're the, you know, slaves or we're the beleaguered Judeans. You know, we're the ones Jesus or Moses were speaking to. It's us. It's not some other group, but there's actually another group that we need to call out to ourselves to help empower that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, one of the hopes that I keep holding out throughout this period is because this pandemic is sort of revealing a lot of weaknesses in our society. Perhaps we can come on the other side of this with a commitment to strengthening those weak areas, you know, uh, and when it comes to access to healthcare or to, um, some kind of sustainable, um, income through a period of loss. But, uh, you know, rather than just go back to normal.
Yeah, I think we always have to fight that. You know, I think, uh, I grew up on a, a boundary, you know? I was in the, the hood of West Philadelphia. You know, the projects were, were right there, right, right on top of me, you know? My neighbors struggled economically all the time. And I would go out to my Jewish day.
We're, we're losing you.
They didn't understand, get theirs at 16. I'm sorry, can, can you hear me now? Just tell me.
Yeah, 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 you're good. Yeah, that's better.
So they would get, so, um, the, in the suburbs, uh, you know, they, all the friends of mine in, in school, they would get their new cars at 16. And they had no idea what life was like. Uh, and yet I saw my neighbor, my next door neighbor, uh, uh, you know, uh, and all down our block that never really understood the opportunities that were out there. What one story that comes to me when I was training to be a chaplain after rabbinical school, uh, I was in the hospital late at night and I got called in to, um, of, a, uh, meet with a family who ate, two brothers had been in a knife fight. And the daughter of one of them was in the waiting room with her husband and a young, two young children. And, uh, they were telling me the daughter was, when she was young, she had been in Alaska. And it'd been the most amazing experience. Something had afforded her the opportunity. And she felt that she, that was the only safety that she had in her life. And yet I lived, you know, in what was called Mount Airy and the hospital was in North Philadelphia, very, very dangerous, almost war zone. I was only a few miles away from where she was living. She didn't know to find a different space. She only had to go a little bit, you know, right down the road, uh, you know, a 10-minute walk at most. She all, she thought you had to go all the way to Alaska to find safety.
Right.
And that's, that's kind of how it feels when, you know, to even realize what's right around the corner from, from where you are.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let me, um, share the gospel reading. And I'll go back to the, uh, share screen here. So this gospel reading occurs at the very, very end of the gospel of Matthew. And, um, so this is a, this happens after the experience of Jesus' resurrection. And, uh, he's sort of launching his, his disciples. And it says, "Now the eleven disciples went to Galilee, to the mountain to which Jesus had directed them. When they saw him, they worshipped him, but some doubted. And Jesus came and said to them, 'All authority in heaven and on earth has been given to me. Go therefore and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, and teaching them to obey everything that I have commanded you. And remember, I am with you always, to the end of the age.'" So that's the, that's the, that's the passage. That's, that's how the, the gospel story ends in Matthew's gospel. And, and it strikes me, first of all, i- in Matthew's gospel, there is a sort of conscious, I, I think, conscious, uh, uh, attempt to create a parallel between Jesus and Moses. So the first part of the gospel, you have, uh, Jesus. He's born and his life is threatened. So they have to, his family has to escape to Egypt. Uh, and then back from Egypt, back into Judea. So it's sort of a, that parallel between that and, and Moses' birth and the danger that he, uh, is, um, uh, sort of born into. Then you have this passage, this whole sequence of, um, of sayings where essentially Jesus is reinterpreting the law and doing that from a, a mountain, the, um, the, it's called the, um, uh, Sermon on the Mount. Actually, we, we visited that, that, uh, church, uh, when we were in Israel a couple of years ago. And so again, it's this idea that, um, a new liberator has come. Uh, and then at the, at the end, you have, again, Jesus on a mountain, sort of giving the final direction to his disciples to carry this experience into the world and to continue to, um, uh, to teach it and to, to pass it on. And which, which to me, that sort of draws a parallel between, you know, the instructions that Moses is giving folks in, in Exodus to remember this, to pass it on, to, you know, um, transmit this, um, tradition generation to generation. Jesus is kind of, I think, doing a similar thing with his disciples, saying, "Now this, this message is for you to carry into the world." It's, uh, I think, you know, both our traditions have this understanding that nothing sort of ends in the past. We continue to sort of embody these events, uh, in our lives today. And, and, and we do that by sharing, um, you know, this tradition, one generation to another.
Yeah, I can see how the, these would be connected. That, uh, this is about, this is what you need to do for the future. And there's a word in Hebrew that I was just looking for, uh, that occurs in the Exodus text, zikaron, remembrance. Uh, and that's a word that's often used, which is kind of a weird word, if you think about it. Because how can you remember something you didn't participate in? And yet you're asked to remember as if it's part of your own history. And that's what Jesus is saying. At the end of the day, I want you to remember, mark this moment in your collective memory, uh, so that you retell this story as if it had happened to you.
Right.
And, uh, that's definitely a direct connection. They're also both kind of, well, well, what is at the beginning before the Exodus actually happens? Uh, and the other one is, is right there, uh, right before Jesus is crucified and, and leaves this earth. So, um, yeah, very, uh, very, uh, very much a connection spiritually, even if it's the, the, uh, the stories are very different.
Yeah, oh, yeah, the stories are very different. But, you know, again, you know, we were mentioning the, the context of Passover. You know, when Jesus has this, this last Passover meal with his disciples and then begins to reinterpret the meaning of the bread and the, and the wine. Uh, when he talks about, you know, breaking the bread, this is my body. Do this in remembrance of me. And he says that repeatedly. So we, we are, you know, in our tradition called to not just recall, but to re-embody the, the, um, experience of Jesus with his disciples. And then what we, what we hear at the very end, "I am with you always, to the end of the age." So this, this idea that we don't just go out there on our own, but we go out there to carry the presence of, uh, of Christ into the world. And we're accompanied by, uh, by that presence. To me, that, yeah, I, I, I get the same sense at, uh, at the Passover meal. This idea that, you know, this is, this is an experience that, uh, uh, Jewish people are called to carry with them throughout their lives and into their interactions with the world.
Yeah, that's wonderful. I never really thought about the Passover Seder really connects to that Eucharist communion moment, that you're eating the story. Uh, I always loved that at the Seder, we eat the story, that we tell the story viscerally with our mouth as well. Uh, and, uh, it's a very similar way of teaching. So I never connected, even though they are directly connected. Jesus' story is about, you know, that takes place around Passover. So it is connected that way.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's not, that's not coincidental.
No, definitely not. This is just wonderful conversation. I so appreciate, uh, I wish that we could be this person. Maybe we'll start it for the future.
Yeah, I know it, I know. It would be neat if we could.
Sorry, I was, yeah, well, we should do it again, I was gonna say. Let's, let's start.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, it would be nice if we could, uh, invite others to join up and, you know, maybe not for recording it, but, uh, to just have a conversation with some others as well.
That's a great idea. We, we could, uh, and see if we can carve it out. And, uh, it's really wonderful, just sending so many blessings to you and your family and the whole community. We've, we feel a very big spiritual connection to North Presbyterian. And so we, we're always praying for you guys, for, uh, well wishes.
Well, I appreciate that. And we certainly are keeping the people of Shere Shalom in our prayers as well. And, and, you know, we have so many good friendships and, and have been able to do so many things together. And I'm looking forward to being able to get back to that because, uh, I, I truly miss your communion, your community and, uh, and, uh, and, and I'm looking forward to a time when we can all celebrate together.
Ah, man, I love that.
Thank you, Alex.
Bringing it into our recording.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Bye-bye, Bill. We'll, we'll talk soon. All right, let's see.